I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. I have a couple of things I would like to just, little housekeeping on my own here. I'd like to remind everybody that we do have a visitor code conduct policy. If anyone needs a copy of it, happy to share it. But it just reminds people, essentially just to be kind at meetings. There are a couple of comments made in one of the last meetings that I want to make a few comments back to. The calculation that was mentioned for the Eagle Hill that Jen Kalenda did back in 2005 that would bring in a million dollars, that we should go to that calculation, that's not actually accurate. That would be a calculation if the entire property and the campus and all the buildings up there could be taxed. So just like we don't tax schools, churches, and other non-exempt, or rather exempt, properties, we can't just go and do that. So I just want to kind of clarify that, that they are in a pilot program now, that they are not in breach of, they pay based on what the pilot says and what was signed by a prior administration. So I also wanted to clear that up, too. There was also mention of another board member, and I want to take a minute to recognize Eric Bullheim for living in this town for over 30 years. He's been a member of the trustees at the church, he has served on the rescue, the Hardwick Rescue Squad Board, he has been the emergency director for as long as I remember, and volunteered on the fire department for decades. So before anyone wants to publicly bash a board member, you might want to just do a little bit more research and have some respect before doing so. Thank you. That being said, any visitor comments?
I would, I'd like to discuss the sewer commission or the lack of the sewer commission, because I know you're working on some sewer abatements later on in this meeting. I don't know how many years ago it was that the selectmen basically took over the sewer commission. I was on the last sewer commission. I was opposed to this, and I was opposed to it for numerous reasons, some of which have borne out that we, when we had a sewer commission, we met every month, we attempted, some of us attempted to actually do things that we felt were in favor of this town. Didn't necessarily always happen, but since the selectmen took over the sewer commission, basically nothing's been done. The, what was in front of us at the time that the commission was still active was the fact that the USDA was demanding that we rewrite the sewer regulations. I attempted to do that with Mr. Ruggles and, oh, God. Listen, listen, my hands are rubbed. Anyway, mine goes right up.
Yeah?
And, huh?
No.
Can you?
No, no.
Truly quick?
Alan Jewer?
No, no, no. He, um, he's at Paula Roberts' house.
Oh, Benny.
Okay. And every time I brought it up, I was stopped, okay? I said, "The USDA is demanding that we rewrite the sewer regulations, we need to do this." "No, no, no, we don't need to do this." In the sewer regulations, as archaic as they are, is a statement, some information in there that says that every year, we as the sewer commissioners are supposed to go and look at every property and see whether or not they are getting the right EDUs assessed to them. I brought that up for two years, and I, I pointed out just the Windsor Hotel and their other property, the fact that they were completely out of whack with where they should have been, and they should have been like paying at least twice, if not three times more than they were paying now. And we voted on that on a meeting, and everything, we were supposed to send a letter out, I guess Nicole was going to send a letter out, and I was not at the last, the next meeting, and the two of them voted it down. So it went back to the fact that the Windsor Hotel was basically paying the same as a residence, which is completely out of whack. I also pointed out that Cumberland Farms was being, even though I've never complained, they had been overcharged for, based on-
I do recall all this.
Okay?
Yeah.
And that the new laundromat was on, was being charged as one, as a single-family residence. So that is actually in our regulations that that has to be done every year. If that was done every year, the abatements that you're working on would have been caught, because most of those are ones that keep coming back all the time, because-
I don't disagree, Liz.
You know, but-
So I think-
We don't have a sewer commission anymore.
So we do, it's the board.
I know.
Because that's how it had to be for this project to move forward. And you, you make some great points, and I think there's things that we should look into, because I think once the projects got going and we got wrapped up in that, these things kind of did get pushed over here. So duly noted, that we definitely, we should probably look into that.
I, I mean, I personally think that, you know-
We used to-
An advisory sewer commission or something.
Well, before we make more committees that aren't, you know, that just end up-
We already had one, but yeah.
We used to dedicate a portion of one meeting to the sewer.
Okay.
And I don't know that that-
Once a month.
Once a month, right. We would, the beginning of a meeting would be for the sewer. Like Scott would come in if we needed him to, you know, and things like that, so-
Do you want it to be once a month?
I think, I think we should probably go back to that and just maybe to reconnect with Scott-
Yeah.
And see, thank you for bringing it up.
Scott, Scott would come to our meetings and, you know, and we would go over everything, you know, personnel, the whole nine yards, okay?
No, I was on it. I was on the commission too at one point, so, and then it merged with being just the board members.
Okay.
We should start early.
Huh?
We should start early.
Yeah, like a half hour, have that dedicated to, I, if, would you, do you mind if it's the first meeting or the second meeting in a month?
Yeah, I have a couple of appointments.
Does it matter? Why don't we do the first, and then we can start, march off-
Yeah.
With that.
Okay.
So does six o'clock?
That's probably fine.
Okay, to start?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll do that and just maybe see if Scott can come.
Absolutely.
And we'll kind of get the ball rolling again on all of that stuff that should be looked at.
Thank you. I think, and I think the citizens would, you know-
Yeah, no, I think once the projects got rolling, it just kind of unfortunately got put over to the side, and once it got, you know, the commission got demolished-
Yeah.
I hate to say demolished, that sounds wrong, but yeah. Once it got sorted, right, dissolved, thank you, much better word. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So it's a question on, on the regulations you're talking about, are they in the bylaws or are they under the sewer committee?
The sewer actually has its own set of regulations.
Regulations, okay.
So it might behoove us all to take a look at those again prior to the next meeting.
And get them out to you.
Yeah, so we can peruse them.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, they have, it's a binder in itself, so. Okay. Okay. Any other, actually, sorry, I'm going to take Bill Cole first, because I'm-
Hi, thanks. And Chair, thank you for the way you handled the last board meeting and, and what you said tonight. I'd had, being on the planning board and seeing all the, all that Eric had done in that committee for so many years, that's-
I knew I wouldn't remember.
That's to be on that list, too. Anyways, thank you both. But a couple of things that I did want to mention, maybe you've received a letter from the planning board forwarded from the, well, asking this, this board to consider changing the number of members on the master plans steering committee from 13 to 11. It's been hard to get a quorum. We, we wanted to wait till they did it through the planning board, and we voted to pass a request on to you. So I don't know if you've got that or if you can act on it tonight, but we'd like, we'd like the quorum to be six, not seven, it's just, there's a big difference with-
Yeah, guiding people to meetings.
Right.
I can respect that.
Anytime, anytime you could do that, we would, that committee and the planning board would-
Are they all, are they all filled?
No, they're not. There's a, there, there would be nine or 10 even, there are nine or 10 now that all, which are spot.
So nobody would get cut if we didn't?
No, nobody would get cut. And there's still room.
You have vacant-
Importantly, there's still room for a new voice to join in if she come along. So that's one thing-
So you're looking to change the master steering committee from thirteen-
Master plan steering committee.
Master planning steering committee.
Committee size of 13 to 11.
Total.
You can do that, that would be great.
We'll move.
Yeah, we, oh, you can put that on the agenda for the next meeting, it came in at the end of last week, so I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
You can't address it tonight? Being brought up in comments?
Mm, you're really not supposed to.
Okay. Is that going to goof up on-
Well, I, I, we're going to have a good turnout on our meeting this week, I believe.
Okay.
But if somebody doesn't make it, then we, if the difference in six and seven matters again, we'd make a progress. You know, same RCP is coming over deciding some steps. It'd be helpful, I guess I can't say it's an emergency, but it's supposed to be on the agenda, certainly a new mail.
You know, it could meet real quick next week or a couple of days from now, just posted.
This was just, this was already done by the time that-
No, I'm just saying so that, you know, we don't have to-
When's your meeting this week?
You mean, ideally it would be posted as an agenda item for tonight, so you can pick, take it up and discuss and vote on it, is that what you said?
Right, right.
And you tried to post it for tonight?
Well, yeah, I had the master plans, ended the planning, planning voted it in a couple weeks ago, Lou knew this, and I thought, I thought she was going to squeeze it on here.
But it didn't make it before posted, yeah.
She did talk to me, yeah, did make it before the agenda was submitted to the select board and the package and everything.
Totally your call whether, whether something like that can be handled without being on the agenda 48 hours ahead.
I did talk to Lucinda about being on the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I heard that. So we'll get by. Now, second thing, if I may, I guess the town, town reports are all being compiled and everything's going into that now, and it reminds me, there's some things that I've noticed in work in some, on behalf of some of the committees and the CDs and the trust accounts that are around in the town. There's several areas that could be improved a lot, I think. We've done some things with the CDs, some of them, but on that front, I think it would be good if, if weight of the board was behind us getting the details on every CD that was in the process of being rolled while Jessica was here, because there's, there's been a lack of either decision-making or, or action or reports or whatever. So there's, we're talking about a lot of money, it's the difference in making next to nothing, the bank pays you, and the amount we can make now is, I don't know, it's like 50 bucks a day on the aggregate. It's not all in question now, but we've got to, I think, be able to be on top of that, and it's a job for the treasurer and Sarah Hunter is very helpful, particularly with this next thing I want to mention. But if you can, if you can authorize the CDs to be handled diligently-
Thank you.
That would be helpful.
So I can speak to that if you want.
Yeah.
So the two Unibank ones were rolled over at the exact same percentage, the 4.15. The other bank, I can't remember the name of the other bank, that one I have to check on, but the two Unibanks were taken over.
There's an add-on, there's a report. And what I've seen sometimes is when Jessica did this, she'd say, "Oh, that had all happened the right way," and then you'd look and you'd see, "Yeah, but they, they put it in place two weeks later after sitting there for a quarter of a percent for two weeks, and they shouldn't have done it that way, and in some cases we've been able to get that adjustment made."
I was very proud of myself for doing the Unibank ones, so I know they're all right.
If you had the numbers, I'd love to see them, so that I can update my notes and tell the relevant-
I saw your email come in, too. I talked to Sarah about it when we, I met with her on Friday afternoon, and she was going to follow up about the other one with the other bank. So once I have information from her, I can forward it on to, but I don't have information-
Can, can he sit directly with Sarah?
He absolutely can, but he can't be the one to make the phone calls.
No, I understand that.
And neither can she. I mean, it's, it's up to the treasurer and there's a form to authorize you to even do it on the phone with me or-
Yeah.
So that, that would be fine.
Yeah.
These, these have been all like end of the year rollovers, so we're kind of-
But we want to stay on top of those in the interim of finding new-
But we absolutely are.
Yeah, so that we're not losing out.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm, you know, I've kind of been overseeing it, so as soon as I see that something's done right, I take it off my list and tell the committee chair, you know? So that's the easiest, rather than keep wondering if it's happened and asking. So thanks for that. The other thing in, in town reports, there's always a, you know, this sort of repetitive reporting of the value of the different trust funds that the town has or different entities, like the library trust funds and, you know, the Morse for that matter, any ag fund, and then, and then you'll see something like the center school, you know, basically the Ruggles School. And there was money in there, and there was, you know, donated, whatever, 150 years ago or something, and it's, and it's like, where is that now? And what is the purpose? For what purpose is available for that? So I first mentioned this to some of you when there was, at the last town meeting, say allocating $7,000 or something for the school to have the tank, tank taken out or something, but there's money, or there was money for that kind of purpose. And as you talk about what happens to the building, what the town decides to do with the building, once that's gone, I don't think there's going to be anything to do with that money. So I would think you'd want to know-
Where that is.
Where it is, what if anything can be done with those funds now? If it got folded into a different fund, be good to know that, and Sarah Hunter knows a lot about that.
Yeah.
Her, her name's in a lot of the work that's in the file.
She dug into the cemetery, because there was a big to do with the cemetery revolving funds and perpetual funds that I think she also helped out with.
This is a substantial sum at one point, and, and then there were also some dividends that were supposed to go one place that went into that fund instead, and so there's some, some reckoning to be done, and Sarah's going to be good at that, and she said she'd be happy if I helped her, and I'm happy to.
Okay.
It's just we need to know that. And now that the town reports are being done, and I didn't know the deadline was so soon, but I guess it is, so it would also be good, I think, for every committee up at the town to know what, what the value of these different funds actually is, instead of just carrying over a somewhat meaningless number year to year, like one of the libraries' funds was $4,000 in, in 1910, and it's really-
Well, that does work.
Thirty thousand now, so somewhere in the book.
It would be nice to add here things.
About a share letter is 30, and everybody know what's available for what. So that, that was the thought on that, so. And back to the CDs briefly, Jessica had, she saw what we were doing when we rolled some of them and make some good interest instead of nothing, and I think she started to do that on behalf of the town, as she's authorized to do, and has made some interest from the town and such, but I just want to suggest that somebody, it's not me, I mean, I can't see any of that, but somebody should be on top of those particular CDs, those time deposits in the banks for the town, so that when those come due, you know, you can make a similar decision, you know, about membership rolling up, because it's, those are even larger in some cases, and it's, it's a lot of interest, I guess, so.
Great.
Anyway, those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Can I trust that you're going to be nice? I'm, I'm being serious, Jeff.
Is that a requirement?
Uh, it is, in my meeting.
I'll be nice.
If you want to speak, it has to be nice.
So I've sent, Jeff Smith, 307 Aperture, I've sent a few me messages to the members of this board, and I've asked for certain things. One, I wanted to know what the verbal agreement was with Eagle Hill originally, the one that Eric had. I also dispute those numbers. They come to me from the assessor's office, and if I even stipulate-
Okay, I had the same discussion with the assessor this morning, Jeff, because I wanted to make sure my facts were straight. I'm not going to go back and forth with you-
That's fine.
About the number, so that we can move on-
Is this my time or am I allowed to speak?
We can move on from that.
Am I allowed to speak?
If you're moving on from the Eagle Hill.
If I stipulate that you're correct about that number, it only highlights the egregious amount of stuff that has not been addressed with Eagle Hill.
They're a school.
It's not that simple, and you didn't address my emails in fully either, but the thing is-
The verbal agreement was $25,000 that PJ McConnell agreed.
And why do, why does the town have no record of those payments?
Don't know, I would have left it, I left it with the assessor.
I've asked for the record of those payments, those payments, there's no record of them.
They're absolutely, okay, because we talked about them this morning, that that's what was done.
Was there, did Eagle Hill come before this board and request the reduction in the payment in 2022?
No.
Because that's the letter of their agreement. Are they following the letter of that?
They are.
No, they're not.
Okay, Jeff, we're going to agree to disagree. The way that the pilot is written is how they are paying for it. Whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, the town signed off on that agreement.
Did, did they come before this board and ask to reduce that payment? It's in the pilot agreement, it specifically states-
The one year that it was reduced?
Yes.
Because they-
They reduced every year after that, in my opinion, but in 2022, they reduced the payment to $16,000.
Correct.
Why did they do that?
Because they hadn't been paying it correctly, it hadn't been billed correctly for 15 years, however many years.
And so they came before the board and worked that out, and you have that in writing, because that's what it specifies in the contract.
It's with the town, it was with the town administrator and the assessor at the time.
I can't, I'm looking for that documentation, and it so far has not materialized. So-
I don't have anything for you, Jeff.
All right.
Is that all?
I'm done, thank you.
Perfect. Colleen?
Hi. So I just wanted to make sure that your capital planning board came to visit us at Hardwick Elementary School because they were kind of working on plans moving forward, maybe like a five-year capital improvement plan. So they came, we have a need, our roof at the elementary school is, I don't know, 32 years old, I think, at this point, and we have leaks in our cafeteria area. So what I, when we left the meeting together, what we talked about was the MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, offers reimbursement programs, and right now they're offering rates of 75 to 85% reimbursement for projects like this. It's a competitive project, they're only opening these windows every two years now, so there's one open right now in 2025, but they won't open another one for roofs until 2027. Even if we were to be approved, they handle all the legwork, they get all the bids, they come in, they look at the need, they evaluate, so on and so forth. The project wouldn't start until 2026. So the way we left the meeting was I thought they were going to come to your board and recommend that we enter into what we call a statement of interest, which really is just allowing me to submit the school information that says, "This is the vintage of the roof, these are the needs we have, would you consider us for a project?" So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because if the town decides they want to move forward with that, the statement of interest is due by March 21st, and I just don't want to miss out on it, because you're-
Because they certainly came to our meeting, but they didn't indicate an urgency in getting anything back to you, so.
That's okay, that was December. It was okay. Um, so-
Okay.
Yeah, so there's language, so what I'd like to do is leave this with you.
Okay.
I also, I think I sent over all the links with all the information about the project, but to be honest with you, right now, you're just saying, "Sure, let the superintendent submit this."
Okay.
So it can go under review from the building authority, and they may say, "No, we have schools with a much greater need than you have at Hardwick," or they might say, "This is the perfect time and size to do this roof." And so then what they'll do is, they would let us know, and at that point, we would say, "Yes, we're interested in moving on," then they send their people out. It used to be that like we'd have a clerk of the works and so on and so forth, it's not like that anymore. MSBA actually handles all of it. We just did one with Hubbardston at their center school. And even if we get to the final point where we're like, "Okay, here's the cost of the roof."
Right.
If the town decides that you can't afford to do it at that time, we can pull back. You're not locked in until you sign off on that final agreement. And when you sign the final agreement, it really is that we could cover the cost of the roof within 90 days of being assigned the project type of thing. So we would talk all about the borrowing, the school would handle all of that. But, so really, this is just like, yes, we want you to move forward, submit the application, and we'll see kind of where it lands. So maybe they didn't realize we needed to do a full vote.
Okay.
But I just gave Justine the language, so if you do that at your next meeting, that would be great.
Okay.
If you want me back, I'm happy to come back, I'm happy to bring my facilities director back if you have any other questions. There are two directions you can go in. We are looking just for roof replacement. What they do now that they never did before is when they come in and they evaluate the roof, that they decide it can be done through a repair, they'll make that suggestion, and they would offer a repair program versus full replacement.
Okay.
We're not sure they'll do that, but, you know, maybe. They also do offer window replacement, heat pumps, our heat pumps are in good shape, our windows probably need seal replacement, but when we met with your capital team, what we talked about was prioritizing the roof at this time.
They did mention the windows as a weight down the road.
And maybe we could do that through doing a community grant or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just not to stress the, everybody's budgets.
Yeah. Eric?
May I ask a question?
Can Eric speak first, please?
Just, there's a parallel thing going on, I just wanted to let you know. The town went through a project, a process, and we got a municipal vulnerabilities preparedness. We're in that program, so we're eligible to apply for grants. We're going to be meeting Tuesday.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, the town administrator and I, we have letters of interest. Mine was about the roof at the school, including a solar array to power the air conditioning. This is an enormous opportunity, pie in the sky, but we've just gotten the word that if we can work with Peter Sham and Hubbardston, because they want another roof, maybe this could happen. So this comes out of emergency management stuff, MEMA.
Might as well try every avenue.
So we got, we got several things going on.
Yeah, great.
Good, just wanted you to know.
Yeah, no worries at all, and I don't think there's any harm as you're pursuing that and still filling this out.
No, no, we should do every-
I think we should tackle every avenue.
Whatever one is going to be more beneficial, then that would be great.
Agreed, agreed. Liz?
My question was, if you do a full roof repair, will they go with a metal roof?
And I'm asking for the reason that if you do an asphalt roof, you've got 20 to 40 years maybe, okay? Metal has usually got a 50-year guarantee, and they can last twice that. Plus, if you're looking at solar, standing seam metal roof, you don't have to drill into it, there's, there's the ability to just hook the solar panels to it without damage to the roof. And, you know, if you're putting solar arrays on an asphalt roof, it's like, it's going to like, danger to you, so. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I, I can't give you an answer, what I will tell you that they did in Hubbardston was a combination, so there's a metal section of roofing, and then there are asphalt.
I'm sure they look at each building individually and gauge what's best for it.
It's just the assumption that, metal does cost more, but it's still-
But, Chair?
Yeah.
So Jessica from the superintendent's office today called me today, and I did put a note to put this on the next agenda.
Okay, perfect. So we'll, we'll vote and sign on that. Thank you for coming.
We'll have this on the list before him.
You'll just get the package, yeah.
Yeah. The letter?
Oh.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yep. Oh, yeah. Yep. Okay. Discussion and vote on, did you have your hand up, Bill?
It was only about the solar involved in the roof, and those questions got asked, anyway.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. I thought I, and then I.
You were right.
Discussion and vote on federal award policy.
So in discussion with our audit firm, you're still working on the audit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, because he put me in the hallway.
I talked to Kelly on the way in, and I had also checked in with Justine earlier. So, you know, thanks to the board for giving us a time slot on the agenda. But I'd like to ask the board, if you folks don't mind, letting us slide to the next meeting in two weeks. I think it's Monday, the 10th.
The 10th, yeah.
Justine made a point of making sure I got on this agenda. Thank you, but.
We'll just keep it. We'll keep it until we see you and.
Yeah, so the whole point is that I'm trying to get the president of the association here, too, because I think it's important. The letter, I can't believe it. Kelly's going to shake her head, but it was February 2017 when we received the letter of support that then Senator Gobi used to help us get funding for the light work. And the last sentence says, please keep us informed of your future progress. We're rooting for you. So, you know, we'd like, whatever, 10 minutes, between 5 and 10 minutes, just to update the board.
Perfect.
And then we have.
So we'll see you back from the next meeting, hopefully, with.
Thank you for considering.
That's okay. No, I should have said something. I guess I would.
It's okay. Thank you.
So federal award policy.
So a discussion with our audit company, one of the things we're going to get dinged on in our audit this year is that we didn't have a federal grant policy in place when we took out the big USDA grant. So I asked them for a copy of the one that they recommended. This is the one they recommended. So it's on your agenda. So moving forward, we'll be in compliance.
Okay.
What?
So what do you mean we get dinged?
So every year when we do our audit, we get a management letter at the beginning of the audit, which is everything pretty much that we're doing wrong, and this is going to be.
Or areas in which we could improve.
Yeah, that was quite better.
See, I can find my words sometimes, too.
Not a fine.
No, no, no. It's just, it's just, you know, little flags that say, you know.
Things we need to work on.
Right, yeah.
And then once we do them, the next year, they go away, so.
Has everyone reviewed it? We're good with it? I would take a motion with, please.
Make a motion to adopt the federal grant policy and procedures? Second.
All those in favor? Sewer abatements.
So we'll have everything pre-designed tonight. Sandy put this nice cover sheet together. I have all the backup if you need it. For the five properties.
So we've got sewer abatements for 119 Pine Street, Willwright 40, Brick Street, Gilbertville, 441 Main Street, Gilbertville, 440 to 446 Main Street, Hardwick, and 73 North Street, Gilbertville.
Is that you, sir?
Yeah.
Take a motion?
Has Scott weighed in on any of these?
All of them. And so did our assessor and the executive assistant in my office. It was, I have all the backup if you need to see it.
And I move that we grant these abatements. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and vote on dog warrant.
It's a request of the town clerk, something that you, this board has approved annually.
Correct. Constable posts it.
Yes, correct.
I like to move that we approve the annual town dog warrant. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and vote on Hardwick Rod and Gun Club Rimfire Rampage. This is an event that they've been doing twice a year. I do see that they completed their events application to the best of necessary inability. Looks like it's going to be on April 12th, 2025. Chief Ayot has signed off that he's aware of it.
They want to shoot past the 10 o'clock?
Correct. 7 to 11, so they have to, you know, they always let us know. It's only about 20 people. Excuse me.
I move that we grant the permit to the Hardwick Rod and Gun Club to do their rimfire rampage till 11 o'clock. I'll second it.
On April 12th, 2025.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Calvin Page Building RST.
So I sent the board a draft of it as part of your packet, and then council got back to me this morning with a couple little tweaks. It was nothing substantive. So I did put on your place just there. You'll see when you, it's like a couple pages of just a couple little things that I will make those corrections or changes at your pleasure. And if you look at the process schedule, if the board votes to approve this tonight with the changes from council, I will be posting this on Wednesday. It will be going on the town website, the central register, comm buys, and I'll put a little blurb in the paper. The way we're reading.
Okay.
I do have an amendment I'd like to add to this. Under the third page, under the comparative selection criteria, section 5, you have the four things that give you points for each thing.
Yep.
And I recommend we add a fifth one that says public benefit and community impact, and a six where it's a nonprofit, let's say a nonprofit gets this building, nonprofit contribution to the town. What is the public benefit? And they'll outline it in it. And basically, there'll be a scoring system based on, you know, three, two, and one, and zero.
The scoring system that is already there?
So like number five, the public benefit and community impact, it would be, project provides significant public benefits such as community space, economic growth, or services that directly enhance residents' quality of life. That would be like three points, highly advantageous. And then for two points, a project provides some public benefit, but not as extensive. One point would be limited indirect public benefit. And zero points would be no clear public benefit. That would be under item number five. Item number six for nonprofit, highly advantageous would be three points, and nonprofit provides measurable public benefits such as a direct financial contribution through a pilot agreement or free subsidized public services, job creation for local residents, or facilities open to the community. Two points would be nonprofit provides some public benefit, but they are limited in scope or availability to town residents. One point would be nonprofit claims public benefit, but does not provide direct measurable support to the town. And zero points would be nonprofit offers no clear benefit to the town.
And you'll send me the language?
Yeah. Just do notice. I got it in my notes.
But are we adding sections to this, then? Because.
Yeah, it would be under, number five would be added right after.
I understand the scoring.
Yeah.
But are you asking anyone that's bidding these questions?
Yes.
Where?
Right here on page three would be inserted after quality of proposed conceptual site plan, which is number four. We'd add number five below that and number six in that area.
So this is like the scoring criteria when we get the proposals back.
I'm okay. I'm behind on my homework.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm seeing what you're, so we're adding it here, and then the scoring would be.
Yeah, because of the.
What you just read.
Yeah, because there's nothing that measures community, like a benefit for the citizens of the town, per se.
Okay.
So it's just.
Well, it's the town's building. They were.
Right. We don't, however it's working, but it's also a scoring system, so there was nothing that said, hey, if it was a public benefit to the town, that they wouldn't get any extra points for it.
Can we tweak it one more time with these improvements?
You can vote on it with these.
With the improvements.
And it gives me the data.
I just assumed let this get going. I think the parties involved would like to see this actually be available to get and start working on.
Okay.
Right? I think we've.
I want you to handle it.
I think we've dragged this out long enough. So I'm fine with these changes if we.
And I can email it to Justine, and I'll copy both of you with the language.
Yep.
Okay. You're welcome.
See, I put the date for this to be posted Wednesday, so I could have a day to, like, make these changes.
Perfect. Okay. So I would make a motion, I would take a motion rather.
Make a motion that we address, adopt the request for proposal for the Calvin Page Building with the amendments of five and six added to page three.
And town councils.
And the, yeah, the tweaks. Yep.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wait, do we need the date for the opening? That wasn't in there.
I did.
It's, well, it's blank. It's March, but it's.
I did have a date.
I see the deadline for submissions is the 12th. I mean, I would assume the opening.
It's supposed to be before your next meeting. I think I put the 17th. I put the 17th.
So you're not opening them when they come in?
I was.
Do we open them all at once?
Yes, and you don't have to. I mean, you can. I mean, you can put a date, you can put any date you want there. Again, before your following meeting, so then we could do that for your next meeting.
For bids, we open them all at once?
Yes.
So.
Right, but we can open them all at once. Like, she can do the bid opening. It doesn't have to be, and she can read all the bids and put it on a spreadsheet, and then present it to us, and we address it at the following meeting.
That was my plan.
Okay.
Okay.
And any of you are welcome to come to the bid. I mean.
I just typically, whenever they're submitted, they're opened on the same day, so.
I've done both. I haven't always opened them the day they've been due, and they all often be timestamped, but I've.
I would open them the day they're required to be submitted before the time due. That should be a bill.
Because if we put them out on the 26th, you're only, you're giving two weeks for them to get back.
That's really not enough time.
That's tight.
What is the legal requirement?
So there's no legal requirement, but there has to be, if you see there's enough, there, so it's two weeks for them to get, if they have any questions, or if there's an addendum that needs to be issued that we have until March 10th. But if we have nothing, then the deadline for proposal submission is the 12th. We can change that to the 17th.
I would push that out to at least the 19th.
The 19th? We can, no, we can change that.
Yep.
What day?
It's a Wednesday, and so it gives a full three weeks. It's just two weeks is tight for someone to put a complete packet together.
You said the 19th?
And then our meeting is the 24th. Or it can be 10 a.m., so it can be early.
If they come back on the 19th, then you're going to have to change the opening date.
I understand that.
No, I would just, I would do them all in the same.
Yeah, I can do that, too. Okay.
Because, yeah, that's, two weeks is really tight. Yeah. February 10th, 4th, 5th. Okay, so we're good with those things?
The 19th, yeah.
And then.
March 19th, and what time? 10 a.m.?
I would do, well, then that gives you almost two days to go, to, you know, go open them and then go through them for our meeting on Friday.
I can do the bid opening at 10 a.m. that day, yeah.
Okay. All right. Meeting minutes from January 13th.
Quick question. Do you need an amendment for the date?
It's probably not a bad idea.
Do a motion to approve the request for proposal for the Calvin Page Building with the date opening of March 19th, 2025, at 10 a.m. with the amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I move we adopt the minutes for January 13th, 2024. 25.
Well, it's on the agenda.
Just a few things to read.
Okay. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town administrator report.
So I met with the construction company that's going to be doing the MassDOT project here on Route 32 from Ware, New Branch, Reed, Gilbertville, and they were looking for space to rent. So they will be renting the upstairs planning board office. It looks like approximately about a year. They're going to fix up the room, fix the window, paint it, hire a moving company to help us move stuff anywhere in the building. And when all is said and done, it looks like we'll be getting about a little over $11,000 in revenue for the town. So that's super exciting, a creative way to bring in a little bit of money and get some space fixed up. We're still looking to get quotes for the tree removal behind Town Hall, and also something that has come up is we're looking for a new front door, too, so we're getting quotes for that, too. As you know, we have that metal bar that we have. So I met with the finance committee chair last Friday. I've been attending all their meetings as they're going over the UPY 26 budget. I had a Zoom meeting with CMRPC on the CDVG grant projects on Highland Terrace and Memorial Field. The Memorial Field RFPs are coming back. I think they already received the bids, and we're not opening them until next Wednesday for the stuff, for the planning study that was put in prior to my arrival. So Mr. Fleming and myself, we reviewed resumes and companies of people that could come in and do grants for us at eight hours a week to help us out until the end of this fiscal year. So hopefully, July 1, we'll get a grant crossing my fingers, but we did find someone, and he's going to start this week. Just, like I said, eight hours, help us with grants, because we are in peak grant season. So that was super helpful, thanks to the donation from the Fleming Family Foundation. We were able to get someone in at eight hours until the end of the fiscal year. So I've had several meetings with insurance companies, consultants, and I'm looking at rates because our rates for our health insurance have come back just completely skyrocketed. I know it's not, you know, unique to Hardwick, but just to do our due diligence, you know, I have, again, I met with a health insurance consultant. I am talking to other towns and other companies, so we'll see what comes back. Our auditors are back trying to finalize our audit that was supposed to be done in December. We had some issues in that office, but hopefully, those are behind us, and we can get our audit done really soon. So we've interviewed three candidates for all the vacant highway positions. I actually received a pretty good resume today, so hopefully, we can get that person in, too. So we're checking some references, and hopefully, we can get those positions filled. So we did post the vacant treasure collector position on the MMA website, Indeed, and the town website. I did, we did meet with a prospective, can't say applicant anymore, because she did officially apply, candidate with our interim treasure collector. Sarah loved her. She did great. So the next issue will be coming before the board on March 10th. So that's super exciting. So continuing with contract discussions with employees that have contracts that expire at the end of the fiscal year. I'm meeting with our fire chief on Wednesday. Our building inspector is out with a death in the family, and then after that, I'll be able to work, put drafts together, and we can have a meeting with the board. So we're almost there. So we held a manager's training through Meyer, our insurance company, and 15 people attended. Bill, what did you think of it?
I thought it was pretty good. I've been through some of it before. I thought you did a good job.
So today, I met with our town clerk to start talking about the annual town meeting and kind of, you know, when the board should be opening and closing the warrant and getting all that stuff together. So look out for that in April. I attended a monthly Ware Civic and Business Association meeting with Bay State Health. In this underpersonal thing, I was appointed by the Massachusetts Municipal Association Board of Directors to serve on the MMA Policy Committee on Personnel and Labor Relations. So I'm really excited about that, and I just want to assure the board that when I go to these things that are statewide outside of the town of Hardwick, that I do my absolute best to represent the town in the best way I can. I want to recognize the Hardwick Fire Department. They responded to a structure fire on High Street and were able to save the home last weekend. I also want to recognize the Hardwick Police Department, because they were part of efforts that saved a missing man in the woods two weeks ago, that started in Ware and with the state police and our police guys. The guy was rescued, so. And then at the back of the town administrative report, we did get a really. And then at the back of the town administrator report, we did get a really kind email about the highway department that I wanted to read. We've had a lot of really bad weather lately, and this was a really kind email. This woman wrote, hi, my kids are on a dance team, so last weekend they were competing all the way out in Littleton, Mass., which meant Sunday night, I had to drive them home during the ice storm. I had to go about twenty miles an hour and still slid on just about every road, through every single town. Most roads weren't plowed at all until I hit Hardwick. You guys were the only town I could shut my hazard lights off and drive normally and safely. I could not believe how clean and secure your roads were. The second I hit Ware, I had to drive twenty again. I just wanted to let you know that someone noticed and appreciated what you guys did. Thank you and great job.
Very good.
That's all I have tonight.
Sluckman Roundtable, anybody have anything?
We passed the pilot policy and stuff, and I think we should send some language to SMOC, which is Southern Massachusetts.
Opportunity Council.
Yes, and, and just say, hey, you know, like an introductory letter and say, we'd like to, you know, sit down with you and have communications.
They have the Windsor, and they have a place up on Prospect. I don't know if they have a third, they used to have a third house.
I think it's just a two.
Just a two of them, yeah.
Across from Windsor.
They're located in.
Across from the Windsor. There's a two or three family in there that they also own.
Oh, really? Okay.
Behind the parking lot?
Behind the parking lot.
From Prospect Street?
No, no.
Oh.
Across from Windsor. So there is a third building, okay. That's a good idea.
Well, we have a list regardless, so we can figure that out.
We'd start with them if you wanted to. I do have an introductory letter, if you want to review it, I'll send it along, and I'll send it to Justine, send it to both of you. It's a friendly just to say, hey, we know you're a nonprofit, but there are impacts to the town, maybe you're not aware of this, and we'd like to bring it to their attention.
I always thought there was some kind of state involvement, kind of like CMR PC, you know, kind of some sort of.
It isn't, I mean.
Well, they get a lot of grant from the state, yeah. And that's how they live.
Right, right.
Well, no, it'd be good to have somebody from SMOC in here to talk about it. Just.
I'm not, that's all.
Anything for you, Eric?
No.
You good?
Tell me you're all over me.
You good?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Did you want to look at that SMOC letter, or did you want it on the agenda or anything, or?
Well, you could send it to us.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
And then, yeah, and then just, just so that we can review it.
Okay.
Make sure nothing, you know.
Share what I have.
Don't respond, don't respond all, that's all.
Yeah.
When you respond to Justine. Is that all? We have stuff to sign though, correct?
You have a lot of stuff to sign, yeah.
Move where you turn.
I'll second, sorry.
All in favor? Seven twenty-three.
I wasn't sure, like, we have to sign stuff, so I didn't know.
We can sign, yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, all of you.